Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, welcome to the June 30th session of your Brookings City Council. Ask the acting city clerk slash assistant city manager to record attendance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, as we do have callers on the phone, please indicate present when you hear your name called. Bacon?
Present.
Brink?
Present.
Corbett?
Present.
Hanson?
Present.
Niemeyer?
Present.
Tilton Byrne?
Present.
Wendell?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, public or council comments? Please call a roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. So at this time, open forums and presentation reports and a couple items. Robert McGrath. Everybody probably knows you because you really made Brookings what it is today and we thank you for that. Toughest thing was, you know, was both of us kind of putting our arms back here so we didn't shake hands or anything like that. That's tough, especially when you see a good friend, so with that said, I have a merril proclamation. Whereas Robert McGrath worked for the city of Brookings for over 30 years and after retiring, served on the Board of Health for another 10 years. Whereas the Brookings County Pandemic Planning and Coordination Committee began in 2006 as a partnership between public, private, and faith-based organizations. And whereas the purpose of Brookings County Pandemic Planning and Coordination Committee is to develop a community plan for a pandemic, including setting up a 96-bed alternate care site. And whereas Robert McGrath chaired the Brookings County Pandemic Planning and Coordination Committee for 14 years, participating in tabletop exercises and points of dispensing events to help our community better prepare for pandemics. Now therefore, I keep Corbett Mayor of the city of Brookings, South Dakota, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 30th, 2020, as Robert McGrath Day. And it's hard because I want to shake your hands, but I tell you what, there you go, but we can recognize him. Councilman Hanson, would you please join me down here? This is Councilman Hanson's last meeting and we're going to miss you a lot. So it's just certificate of appreciation presented to Dan Hanson in recognition of service to the citizens of Brookings and dedication to our community from the Brookings City Council. Councilman Hanson, you'll see him at meetings, but he's in, I couldn't even tell you how many other things you're involved with youth in making Brookings a better place and Brookings Health System Board of Trustees for a number of years, Brookings Economic Development Corporation, and currently Chair of the Brookings Health, or Brookings Economic Development Corporation. So it's just certificate, more importantly, gift certificate, maybe now Jess will find you home some night and so you and Jess can go out and enjoy a great meal. Thank you again for all your service to people in Brooklyn.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. The city entered into a development agreement with the Brookings Marketplace LLC in December of 2016. The site is located north of Highway 14 and west of 32nd Avenue. Last year, council did extend the agreement for an additional two years until July 2021. The developer gives staff and council quarterly, if not monthly, updates throughout the year. Annually, the city manager is required to review the agreement and notify council of any concerns. At this last year's review of the agreement, the developer informed staff that COVID has hindered new development of retail across the nation regionally and more importantly here locally. Given the current obstacles, staff does recommend continuing with existing agreement, but look to future analysis of the site and development to meet the agreement. The developer is willing to continue to market the marketplace and look for development of retail over the next year. And they are here to answer any questions you might have. Within the next year, staff will explore continued evolution of the site with the developer and keep council and the public updated. This is just a quick report of that analysis that we do every year with the developer and would stand to answer any questions council might have.
Council have questions or? Okay.
This is Leah.
Oh, yes.
And I would just maybe make a comment. We all know that COVID is impacting us in a lot of ways, but I would just suggest that that could only be a reasonable factor for the last four months of this agreement. And so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. I for one really want to see something happen here by the next yearly review that we have.
Thank you, anyone else? Oh, Councilman Bacon?
I think we discussed this last time, it was on the table, but in addition to COVID, the whole retail marketplace has changed significantly since we started this agreement. So I appreciate the fact that they're willing to continue to try to work on developing this, but I think we as a community and a council need to, you know, look at, are there other opportunities either for this developer or if they're not able to fulfill it, what else we could use that prime real estate for?
Okay, thank you. Any other council member comments? Mr. Drew, anything you want to comment or? Okay, all right, thank you. So at this time, open forum. Public can bring anything forward to the council that's not on the agenda for tonight. Anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward this time? Okay, close the public forum then. Under contracts and change orders, I call on our assistant city manager to speak to action on resolution 20-61.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The current contract for custodial services at the city county government administration building expires on July 31st of this year. City staff did go out for bid and the bid specification provides for a two-year contract with two additional one-year extensions if agreeable to both parties, making the contract valid for up to a total of four years if agreed on by both parties. Bids were led on June 9th with ISS Facility Services and Marsden Building Maintenance LLC responding. ISS is the current facility, current custodial service provider for the facility and provided the low bid of $3,875 per month, which is actually $200 lower per month than the current contract that the city and county are entered into. The staff has found the service provided by the custodial contractor to be acceptable and staff recommends approval of the resolution as presented.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve? So moved.
So moved.
Okay, any public comment on this? Seeing none, council comments? Please call a roll.
Brink?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Resolution 20-61 is approved. Next one's ordinance and first readings, and on first readings, we do allow public comment on first readings although no action is taken on the first reading. And then I will announce the date that we'll be taking action. So charging right up there is our community development director, Mike Struck, to speak to ordinance 20-11.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience in attendance. Ordinance 20-011 is an ordinance rezoning approximately 40 acres in the Timberline Edition. The request is to rezone part of that land from an egg district to residence R1C, single-family district, residence R1D, single-family district, and a residence R3 apartment district. And so you can see up on the map, it's the red area. Part of the rezoning request was modified because we wanted to avoid split zoning on lots. And so we wanted to match up some of the parcels that were already zoned. And so that's where you can see a few of the adjustments there, but it's approximately 40 acres. There's one lot over on the west end that is in the red that will shift to an R1D. So it takes in about 40 acres, we want to set the zoning in place. And then once zoning is approved, they will be coming forward with a preliminary plan. The planning commission did recommend approving this on a nine-to-zero vote. It is consistent with our future land use map as part of our comprehensive plan and I would stand for any questions you may have.
Also, questions? Okay, thank you. There'll be a public hearing on July 14th. Next one is introduction of first reading ordinance 20-015, CFO Eric Rangel.
Good evening. Staff recommends approval of the supplemental appropriation number four for the budget and this is to carry over $249,000 of unused funds for the Bob Sheldon project. It has no incremental impact to the current budget, it's just carrying over funds that weren't used and the project is still on time and it's still on the budget. Any questions?
Okay, be a public hearing on July 14th. Okay, next is public hearings and second readings. And a public hearing and action on temporary alcohol application. Ask assistant city manager to introduce this.
A temporary alcohol application has been received from the Brookings Volunteer Fire Association to hold their annual street dance on July 25th, 2020 in the 300 block of Main Avenue. All required documents have been submitted and they are working on a plan for meeting COVID restrictions in place at the time of the event. Staff does recommend approval and event our representatives are present if there are any questions.
Okay, first let's have, entertain a motion, or let's open and close the public hearings, open public hearing. Anyone here to speak to this? Sir, come on up and if you just introduce yourself, please and?
Thank you, I'm McGoannis, I'm the chairman for the Brookings Firemen's Street Dance this year. This will be our 105th annual street dance and applying for the liquor license, the temporary liquor license.
Yeah?
As far as the COVID thing goes, I don't know how to mitigate or put in place anything to mitigate that during a street dance, so with that in mind.
I know the staff's damn ready to work with all of you on that, so.
Okay.
Super.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So, and hopefully that's where staff is going to come in. So hopefully you will do some public education and maybe encourage the wearing of masks and those kinds of things?
Yes, yep, absolutely, with the fire department staff, that kind of thing, we will encourage wearing masks, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is Holly and I had a similar question. Are we looking at the space that is going to be used for the street dance and then kind of comparing that with distancing measures and having a limit on how many people can kind of enter into that space?
That is not something that we have looked at, being that it is a fundraiser and because it's in the street and there's no maximum occupancy for that, to put a restriction on how many people can be allowed in is not something that we looked into. We, it is something that can be talked about, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I may, city manager?
Oh, yes.
Clear over here. Just to let council know and the volunteer, I know that we have asked Daryl and to set up a meeting with you guys to talk about what measures could be put in place to have best practices throughout this event, what we've learned from the hospital and CDC recommendations. So we'll be having that meeting here shortly with you.
No other questions? Moving the city manager around so I don't worry sitting, but, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Council comments or questions anymore? Please call a roll.
Corbett?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Okay, the temporary alcohol application and license is approved. All right, next, ask city manager, assistant city manager to speak to the National Cemental Show.
A temporary alcohol application has been received from the Swiftell Center to host two events, the Junior National Charlatz Show on July 7th through 10th and the Junior National Cemental Show on July 13th through 16th. All required documents have been submitted and they are working on a plan for meeting COVID restrictions in place at the time of the event. Staff does recommend approval and event representatives are present if you have any questions.
Okay. This time, open the public hearing, anyone care to speak to this? Okay. Nobody have any questions in the public? Council entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have motion in a second. Any questions, council or comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
I think I'm hearing you that you are going to work on a plan to deal with the COVID issues because I know we were hearing from some members of the community that they were very concerned that if it was held without any changes, that we have some real safety issues. So I just really encourage you to put some good practices in place.
And this might be a good time to have Tom come up and talk about some of those practices. I know he's communicating not only to the community that his efforts that will be taking place, but also to those that'll be attending as well, to educate them what's going to be expected when they come into our community. So Tom, could you just talk just briefly about some of those efforts?
Good evening, council, I'm Tom Richter. We are welcoming the National Junior Charlatz Show, they actually move in this weekend. It's an event that we bid on and secured a couple years ago and we met about a month and a half ago and decided that we felt that we could run the event safely with the current ordinance in place at that time. And we are moving forward with that. We're doing a lot of precautions, we're following the CDC guidelines, your ordinance, and enhancing our, we already have a clean facility, we pride ourselves in that. We are enhancing that though. We just received this week two electrostatic sprayers that will help us disinfect high-touch areas quickly. And we're excited about that. We have more hand sanitizers than I've seen before. We have them everywhere, we've had them in the past, but now we have three times that many. We're going to have our food and beverage and our staff, when they cannot social distance, have masks on, food and beverage when we're serving and prepping. We're going to encourage participants to wear masks. We're actually waiting to see what you decide tonight and I am meeting with the National Organization for the Cemental Group tomorrow afternoon to determine how they're going to have their participants, what they want them to do at the event. But we'll make that decision after tonight's meeting. And so we're taking the precautions that we can. We're trying to get people coming back into our community and helping our small businesses, hotels, retail facilities, gas stations, restaurants, because they all need it. And we feel like we can do this safely and we're going to do the best we can.
Councilman Bacon?
Will you have available masks so that you can encourage folks? I know a lot of businesses are doing that, you know, people don't come in with a mask, they're asking them to wear one and they have them available, so are you going to have some?
We'll have masks available, but each of the first two organizations anticipate having their own masks too with them. So we're still working all those details out, but the answer is yes.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Tom. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
What? Okay. Any other further discussion, questions by council? Please call a roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next one to call on the city manager to introduce possible action and second reading on ordinance 20-10.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. The current ordinance 20-007 is set to expire July 13th. The ordinance impacts restaurants, bars, gyms, salons, retail and other similar businesses. The major components include the regulation of 50% capacity limitations on some businesses. Food services, salon employees have to wear masks and grocery stores have to provide separation between the customers and employees. There are other requirements for businesses outlined in the ordinance. Last council meeting, June 9th, the consideration of an ordinance that reduces the regulation to guidelines was first heard. At this time, Brookings, back in June 9th, had 24 COVID cases with 1,113 tests tested. Today, Brookings has 62 cases with 1,674 tested. The item before council tonight would allow businesses to operate as they see fit, but the city would make a request to follow best practices through the guidelines. Council does have a few options tonight, which I can reiterate after the hearing is closed, but the actions could be to approve the current regulation and the legislation would go to effect for the next 60 days. The action would make the regulation into guidelines. Council can make minor changes to the legislation and the action would go into effect immediately for the next 60 days. Council can approve an amendment with major changes, but then we would have to hold a special meeting July 7th for a second reading. And council also has the option to do nothing, of which 20-007 would stay in effect until July 13th.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Wendell?
I'd like to make or offer an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to amend ordinance 20-10 to revert to the original language in ordinance 20-7, which would keep the original restrictions in place and change the language that was amended at our last meeting back to the original language of 20-007.
We have motion of amendment?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right, now, any public comment on the amendment to the second reading?
Hello, Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. I think that all these ordinance, this ordinance should be allowed to expire as of today. As far as this ordinance 2010, removing the things, making them just guidelines is really unnecessary. I mean, guidelines is basically what we're following now. His amendment now to just extend the current ordinance, I believe, would be detrimental to the economy here as it's already suffered enough. The reason I think all these ordinance should be removed is because these businesses can't afford to be operating at 50% or whatever. And I don't believe that it's fair just to penalize the businesses. You're not putting the same stipulations on the general public as you are the businesses. For example, the march that we had on June 5th, I believe it was a date. On that day, there was 20 active cases, or there had been 20 cases, confirmed cases of COVID in Brookings. You don't know Brookings County, you don't know if they're in Brookings or whatever, you can't tell. And you don't know what the age groups were of the cases. So that was 20 cases from the beginning of this whole thing, which was in March, which was three months. Three-month time period, you had 20 cases. In the three and a half weeks since then, the March, we've had, your city managers mentioned 62 is now the total. I read it as 61. Regardless, in the three and a half weeks of, since the March, we've had 40 cases occur. So you have a three-month period where we had 20 cases, where we didn't allow any public gatherings at all. Now you have, in the three and a half weeks, you have 40 cases in just that small period. So that's, what is that, a 200% increase in three weeks? I don't know. But my point is, if you're letting people do what they wish, but having to regulate businesses and telling them what they can and cannot do, that does not seem fair to me. So unless you're going to add stipulations on public gatherings to, along with the ordinance, to make it a level playing field across the board, I think that all these restrictions, guidelines, whatever, should be removed. As far as, you know, the mask-wearing thing, that's kind of a debate on up in the air, whether they work, whether they don't work. You know, if you're social distancing, the mask doesn't matter. I could sneeze now and you wouldn't, if you had a mask on, my droplets theoretically wouldn't reach you. And also, there's debate on whether asymptomatic, whatever the word is, people can actually spread the disease to others. So, I mean, there's just so many unknowns that we still don't know. But I think that we've done enough damage to our community so far by these ordinances and restrictions, that it's time to let it go. Now, and I also found it interesting, I had a discussion with some other people where event after event after event has been canceled. The Arts Festival, the Uncle Sam Jam, Downtown with Sundown. I made a wager with a friend of mine that with all these cancellations, that the city would allow the fireman's dance to go forward. Well, I guess because you just granted them an alcohol license, that means the fireman's dance is a go. And I'm all for it. But I'm not all for canceling all these other events and allowing this to go. It seems to me that you are allowing anything that benefits the city to proceed. It's the same thing with before, when the first, you closed all the businesses, but the first thing that you opened up was the golf course and the liquor store, which benefits you with tax revenue. Again, I'm all for the fireman's dance, I go every year, you know, I'm looking, I was looking forward to going this year and I'm glad that it's an event that's going to go forward. Same thing, what happens when SDSU football starts? I'm sure not, I'm sure you're not going to have any restrictions on that. That's not going to be pushed away because of the COVID, because of all the income that you people, that the city gets from the revenue of the ticket sales, concessions, pillow tax, hotel rooms, et cetera. That would be a major hit to the budget. I don't know what your projections are for the loss of revenue up to this point. The last I heard was you were looking at 30% decrease in your revenue stream. So I would say that it's time to end all these ordinances, let people make their own decisions. They know what this, they know, by now, everybody knows what the rules are that you've suggested, the guidelines you've laid out for everybody to lay, to adhere to, and it's a personal choice whether they do it or not. You're going to have some that agree, you're going to have some that do not agree. But, you know, just to pick and choose who gets to do whatever and the other ones have to abide by strict guidelines, I don't feel that's fair. Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Mayor, could we just clarify, we didn't cancel any of those events. Those are done by the organizers of those events, the city did not cancel any, so that wasn't in our plan.
I understand, I've heard that many times. It's just, my perspective is, you know, if, okay, if my perspective is, okay, if the fireman's dance can go along, why can't Downtown with Sundown? if the Fireman's Dance can go along, why can't Downtown with Sundown? I'm sure that there are few less people that go to the downtown, because I go to Downtown Sundown. I'm sure there are fewer, less people that go to Downtown to Sundown than will be at the Fireman's Dance. I, I've seen, I've been at the Fireman's Dance and it, to me, the, the ratio would be at least three to one more people at the Fireman's Dance than are at Downtown to Sundown. And I'm sure, you know, because they've known all this stuff well, long and long, and it's been an ongoing conversation between you and them and whatever they come up with. I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm speculating again. You know, I'm just saying. Okay, well, that's great, I'm, I'm, I'm glad. But like I said, I think it should be a level playing field for all. If you're going to restrict businesses, you restrict, restrict the public also.
Okay. Please introduce yourself in case somebody doesn't know you.
Rick Heeb. In some respects, I agree. I really do. I think that the public needs to be held to a higher standard, however. I don't think that we're trying to punish the businesses, but we do know there's places where spread in close contact is a real problem. Then all you have to do is look at the national situation right now. We're always about three weeks behind everything. As you recall, it was predicted that we'd reach our peak this month, initially. I thought we were going to dodge that, but it doesn't look like it. We do know that the majority of people that we are seeing now with COVID are young people. And that's national too, twenties to forties. So, you know, I think it's unfortunate, but those of us in the healthcare business are get, are just kind of bracing ourselves right now. Very concerned about what happens when college comes back. Talking about that, trying to figure something out. You know, I don't want businesses to suffer, I don't want that. But the worst thing that could happen is that this thing comes in like a tidal wave and then everything gets shut down. That's a total economic disaster. So, you know, I think the best thing that we can do is personally keep the restrictions we have. Sixteen states, as of today, have increased restrictions, including many of them requiring, not asking, but requiring masks to be worn in public. I heard one of the governors say in his state, no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service. You know, I hear a lot of things saying we're violating constitutional rights. We're not. This is just a public health issue. So I just want council and everybody to consider those things when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heeb. Anyone else? I didn't expect you guys to wrestle for it, but...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. My name is Josh Westwick. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the amendment to the city ordinance on COVID nineteen restrictions offered by Councilmember Brink. And now I suppose I'm speaking in favor of the amendment that's been offered this evening by Councilmember Wendell. I want to begin by thanking the members of this council for their work over the past several months. You've had to make some incredibly difficult decisions and I applaud you for your dedication and commitment to our community. Tonight you will likely make a decision that will have a significant impact, not only for the current members of our community, but also for the thousands of SDSU students who will join us in the coming weeks. Your decision tonight will define our community values and must be made in the best interest of all your constituents. Councilmember Brink's proposed amendment to the COVID nineteen ordinance would transition the current restrictions to recommendations. That proposed change to the city ordinance would place our community at risk. I want to be very clear in that I support the opening of business in Brookings when done safely. However, in light of the pandemic and the increase of cases in Brookings County, I urge you to carefully consider the impact of changes to the original amendment and the negative consequences of those decisions. Councilmember Brink's proposed amendment to change the restrictions to recommendations will likely lead to limited action on COVID nineteen safety measures. For example, on May fourth, May twelfth, and this afternoon, you recommended vice, via social media, that guests at your council meetings wear masks to help reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Yet, since that time, as well as tonight, citizens attending your meetings have chosen not to do so. As you can see, without a policy in place designed specifically to manage public health issues, individuals are not inclined to take action or comply. With this in mind, it is in the city's best interest to leave the current ordinance in place to protect community health. Furthermore, if you are unable to support the current ordinance with restrictions, I ask that this council engage in a critical dialogue about each specific restriction and recommendation outlined in the current ordinance and weigh its merits individually rather than as a whole. I hope that we can all agree that simple actions such as employing mask wearing and providing operational hand sanitizer locations can make a difference and should be articulated in city ordinance for the sake of public health. Now, some will undoubtedly argue that other cities have lifted all restrictions and that Brookings should do the same. I'll remind you of something many of you on this council have cited in the past. Brookings is someplace special. We are not like other communities in the state. Distinguishing ourselves and standing apart from other cities is not something we have ever shied away from. In fact, it's one of the greatest strengths of this community. For example, our community's resilience and willingness to stand up for what is right allowed us to score a one hundred on the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equality Index. Thus, when it comes to a public health crisis like COVID nineteen, our community should not hesitate to be an exception to the norm by making difficult choices to protect the safety of our families, our neighbors, and all members of this community. As council members, you have a responsibility to this community and that includes protecting the health and well-being of your community members, even if that plan of action requires unfavorable decisions or difficult challenges regarding enforcement. If you do choose to move forward tonight by changing the restrictions to recommendations, a decision likely to plague this community for many, many months, I ask that tonight, in collaboration with the city staff and on behalf of the city of Brookings and its residents, that you begin an immediate collaboration with Visit Brookings and the Brookings Economic Development Corporation to identify and recognize publicly through social media, press releases and signage, the names of businesses in Brookings that agree to operate under the restrictions and recommendations outlined in the current ordinance. If you have, if you are choosing to leave the choice in this matter to the public, then the very least you can do is provide the public consumer with the appropriate information about our community businesses and their chosen mode of operation. Doing so will allow the public to make the best decisions to ensure the safety of our family. If you do choose to make a decision to modify the current ordinance tonight, I ask that that recognition program be in place no later than Tuesday, July seventh. Finally, I want to thank those of you on the council who have spoken out publicly about the importance of social distancing, hand washing and mask wearing, and ask that those of you who have not spoken out on these issues to increase your public advocacy immediately. You are all the leaders of this community and our community members are looking to you for guidance and leadership. Also, I ask that you immediately begin collaboration with the city staff to enhance the promotion and advocacy of COVID safety measures significantly. Using whatever means possible, such as press releases, letters to the editor, the city webpage, social media and the public access channel, the city must engage in additional promotion and advocacy for safety in our community, particularly the importance of social distancing, hand washing and mask wearing. You must do more. COVID nineteen is real. It remains a threat to the health and well-being of our community members and it demands your attention and it demands aggressive action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dennis Hedge, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs at South Dakota State University. Mayor Corbett and members of the city council. I want to begin by saying thank you for your leadership during this unprecedented time. The issues before you are complex and I sincerely appreciate the time, effort and energy each of you is investing as you lead our city. As you consider this ordinance, I felt it important to provide you with a very brief overview of the planning and work occurring on the South Dakota State University campus as we look toward the upcoming academic year. On May first, the South Dakota Board of Regents announced that on-campus operations would return for SDSU and other BOR institutions for the fall 2020 semester. Immediately following, SDSU President Barry Dunn established the Jaxzerback Task Force to develop plans for the upcoming academic year, including opportunities for face-to-face instruction. South Dakota State University is steadfast in its mission of providing access to higher education and creating a rich intellectual experience for the purpose of learning, research, scholarship and creative activities. With that said, we know during this time that our efforts must be conducted in a way that upholds the principles of public health and safety in all operations, whether academic, student life oriented, or involving research activity. The university's plans are being developed and implemented with CDC guidance as adopted by the South Dakota Department of Health and the South Dakota Board of Regents. To be successful in achieving our goal, which is an academic year on the SDSU campus in its entirety that includes robust curricular and co-curricular activities and events, making changes to our operations is critical and some of the changes will indeed be quite significant. Beyond action to educate students, faculty and staff on how to protect oneself and others from COVID nineteen, changes on our campus will include an adjustment to the fall 2020 academic calendar to mitigate the spread of the, of the virus. An early start August nineteenth and an end of in-person classes by Thanksgiving break with remote finals. Adjusting our course formats and schedules to facilitate six-foot physical distancing. Classes will be held in reduced capacity with no class gathering being larger than one hundred and twenty. Adjusting seating configurations and putting in protective barriers in selected locations. Many courses will utilize hybrid or blended instruction, so basically meaning a blend of face-to-face as well as online and remote learning. And indeed, some classes will be moved fully online. In addition, our residential life and food service operations will be altered in a way that again, limits population density, promotes social distancing and adheres to the strictest standards. We have great confidence in the plans being developed to bring students to campus for fall 2020 as they're being informed by epidemiologists like our own Dr. Bonnie Specker and the latest scientific studies. We do know however, that no matter the strength of our plans, without collaboration between the university and the city and the overall support of the local community, we will not realize the success we all desire. The measures you have taken today to put us in position to resume on-campus instruction on August nineteenth, and we're deeply appreciative, appreciative of that. In brief, we believe the current ordinance, as is written and in place today, positions us best to complete our semester on the Brookings campus in its entirety, which is indeed what we all desire. I'm here tonight with a couple of colleagues, Vice President Willis, Student Affairs, as well as Vice President Scholl with Research and Economic Development, and I stand by for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Council questions for Provost?
Thank you.
Thank you, Provost. Al Hughton, I see you were back there trying to get up and just got to get you a seat up front.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Al Hughton, Director of Brookings Economic Development Corporation, and I'm here just to say a few words, not on behalf of my board of directors as we did not take an official position on this ordinance, you know, at this time. But, you know, we do have a lot of concerns. So for, as the Director of BEDC, you know, we are very concerned about the fact that we've lost businesses because of the restrictions that we've had in place. We're concerned about the businesses that we will lose if restrictions don't go away. Businesses that we may lose if they do go away. Probably more so concerned about if we have another flare-up in Brookings and how long is that going to shut things down and to what extent. Though we do see what's happening across the country, as other, other people have stated that this is flaring back up. We've been very fortunate here in Brookings County up to this point that we haven't had a lot, but that doesn't mean that that might not change. So this is a, you know, a very difficult subject. We need to have a strong economy, we need to have businesses to be able to operate in Brookings, but at the same time, we don't want to jeopardize their ability to operate by having a flare-up take place. I wish that I could come here tonight and provide you with a piece of data, a professional opinion, an informed opinion of exactly what you should do, but I think you all know that I can't do that. Nobody can do that right now. So I just wanted to express the concerns that we do have. You know, I'm not taking a position one way or the other on this, but concerned about the outcomes regardless of what the decision is. You know, I think, as a gentleman in the back mentioned just a little bit ago, there's a, a real need for messaging. You know, I'm out around the community, try to wear masks when I'm indoors. I go to certain businesses where most people are in a mask, I go to others where nobody's wearing a mask, not even employees. You know, there are things that this community can do that doesn't shut businesses down that will help stop the spread. It's not going to stop all of it, but it will help slow it and hopefully minimize it. And I think those are some things that, that I would hope the council would look at. You know, we're going to do our level best as Brookings Economic Development Corporation to keep getting that message out. We've had conversations today about number of social media, you know, small short videos that we could do, yard signage, other things that, that we intend to try and bring forward to help encourage the public to wear a mask when you're inside, you know, to social distance, to wash your hands. Do all those things that everybody's saying needs to be done to help slow the spread of the virus. So, you know, we're there, we're gonna, gonna help however we can with whatever the outcome of this decision is. But, you know, again, just want to express support that, you know, that we, we do what we can to make sure businesses are able to operate, operate safely. You know, and I don't know exactly what that answer is, but, you know, I think everybody wearing masks would go a long ways. So if there are things that we could do, you know, as a community to make that happen, I would certainly be supportive of that. So I'm open to any questions you might have as well for me.
Questions, council? No, Councilman Bacon?
There were some, I was on some calls early on in this that the chamber was hosting with businesses and I found that very helpful and, and they were showing a lot of creativity on how they could continue to function with these restrictions in place. And I know you know and understand that we're not doing this because we find joy in it. But I've been curious on the businesses that have been able to open up under our current restrictions. Have they noticed that the public just isn't coming to shop either? Or are they seeing that people want to come in and shop?
You know, Patty, I'm afraid I can't answer that question. I, you know, when we're talking about the retail businesses, I have not had that kind of direct contact and asked that specific question. You know, I, I do know that there are a number of people, myself included, that have been a little bit reluctant to go out to eat at different restaurants. Some that we'd like to go eat at that haven't opened up yet. But I, you know, most of my involvement with this has been with the, the larger employers, manufacturers. And, you know, just to reiterate something that was said in the forum that I, you know, conducted with manufacturers with the chamber. You know, they, they have gone to great lengths to try and, you know, restrict what people do in their businesses to social distance, to put safety precautions in place. Even that's not enough all the time. But they all said, you know, they're not so concerned about what people do when they're at work, it's when they leave work and go home that they don't know, you know, what's going to happen. And that's where the, where the infections are taking place. And that's, you know, that's on the people, that's on the individuals. Like, you know, I, I don't know that you can legislate perfection on this, you know, as a, a public policy body. It's going to take the, the will of the people to really change, you know, the potential outcome that we could have. So regardless of the decision, I think it's, you know, extremely important that we keep pushing out to the community that, that individuals need to take action. They need to do what they can to, you know, make sure that they're not spreading the virus and even those that, that can catch the virus and not have negative... virus, and even those that, that can catch the virus and not have negative consequences.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Any other comments?
Hi, Bill Allsutter, 306 11th Street. I support Councilmember Wendell's amendment. I'm glad to hear that Mr. Hughton was offering some, some help, but it kind of bothers me that you're considering, you know, taking away the restrictions before you make a plan on what to do next. So I guess I'm wondering if you guys have plans to encourage good behavior, improve the testing and tracing situation here, or, you know, a plan for what you will do if there is a flare-up, what we will do about that. Do you guys have plans for those things yet?
We do have a pandemic plan in place, but that's one of the discussions we're having. I know President Dunn, I had a conversation again yesterday about how do we work together to get that message out, but it also takes the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, as Mr. Hughton said, we need to all get that word out, that, you know, masks, social distancing, that area.
I, I appreciate that. I do feel like, mostly I hear talking about talking, when you hear what people doing, you say, you know, "We met with this person and talked," but I guess I'd like to see more action come out of those things.
Anyone else? Okay, those public hearing comments? Counsel, you want to repeat the amendment again, or?
Certainly can. Right now, the amendment before Council is to revert back to the 20-007, which takes the current ordinance from guidelines back to requirements. That's the amendment before you tonight.
Mr. Mayor, this is Holly.
Okay.
I would just like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion on the table to clarify that owners and employees at all businesses outlined, including bartenders and restaurant servers, should wear masks. I think initially, when we had passed the original ordinance, that was the intention, but I think there's been some question in that language, so I would just offer an additional amendment to kind of clarify and strengthen that language in the ordinance.
I'm looking over at the table there. City Attorney, can you clarify?
Yeah, I think, I think the, the point is just to clarify existing language in 20-007, and what that would do would be to clarify the provisions that pertain to employees requiring them to wear masks. For example, restaurant employees, I think it's clear, but those that are in alcoholic beverage licensed establishments, that may not be clear.
Okay.
And I think that's a very minor amendment, but an important one, and we can incorporate that into this, this proposed amendment if both the mover and the second agree to that.
Okay, so would you?
I accept that as a friendly, sure.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman Wendell.
Just, I, I accept that as a friendly amendment, certainly.
You accept that as a friendly amendment? Patty, you were second? Okay. Okay, so that is accepted as a friendly amendment. Did we have a second to Councilman Hilton Burns? Okay, okay, so we're fine then. All right, thank you. Okay, were, everybody clear on what we're voting on? Any questions? Okay, please call a vote.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Hilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
No.
Corbett.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Do the amendments. Did we have a date on that?
Yes, what'll take place now is that we'll have to have a special meeting July 7th for another reading of this one since there's substantial change to this ordinance.
All right.
Can I ask a clarifying question? And maybe this is a better conversation to have at the end of the meeting when we discuss topics for future meetings, but I do think it's important we have a conversation around the enforcement of this ordinance. Educational efforts that were mentioned tonight, I think one of the biggest challenges and maybe a sense of frustration folks are, are getting is that this ordinance is in place, and we've got good actors in the community, but those that are not following it, we've struggled to enforce properly. And so if we're going to extend the ordinance, which the Council has supported this evening, I'd like us to have a conversation about what enforcement truly looks like, and if the city staff is experiencing challenges with enforcement, I'd like to have a better understanding of what those are and how we can strengthen the enforcement. It's only going to be as strong as our enforcement capabilities.
Councilman Hanson?
I would echo Councilmember Wendell's comments 100%. Obviously, tonight's my last meeting, and so this discussion and decision will be made without me present on this side of the dais at least. But I, that I think has, has been many people's frustration, is that this ordinance has been in place all, all along or for, for a period of time, but yet there are a number of times where I can say I've walked into a, an establishment where workers should have been wearing masks by this ordinance, and short of me calling Paul or, or necessarily code enforcement, you know, nothing is going to happen. And, and so that only takes so long, as any of us with little kids at home know, that, you know, it's a learned behavior, and you keep seeing how much you can get away with until all of a sudden there's a new threshold there. And so I think enforcement will be important. I think communication will be important, and I would encourage you to have a conversation about the requirement of face masks, and I know that's not a popular conversation, but I think you heard a lot of comments here tonight. And, and I think, you know, I saw a crude cartoon today that made me laugh, but also I think simplifies what the wearing of masks does, and so I apologize in a fan, in offense if I offend somebody, which is never a good way to start a story, but, you know, it's that if, if somebody walks up to you and urinates on you without their pants on, you, you get wet quite, quite quickly. If, if you're wearing pants, then not all of that urine makes its way through, and if they're wearing pants, then almost none of that urine makes its way through. And I think it's hard for us to, to see particles in the air when people sneeze or people cough, and not to correct you, Mr. Walker, but a sneeze can actually go 20 feet, so from where you were standing to me is, is less than 20 feet. But I think it's easier for us to, to picture those types of things for those of us who aren't in particle science. And, and so I, again, don't mean to be crude, but I think it's an important conversation for you guys to have, and much like Bill, the last commenter said, I think it's, it's time to stop talking and, and start taking action on a lot of these fronts. So with that, I'll say my piece.
Okay, thank you. So, yes?
This is Leah. Could I add a, a statement to that as well?
Certainly.
I would, I would agree with what Councilmember Wendell suggested there as far as having a conversation about that. I also think that we have to have a conversation about the future just generally. It's possible this disease doesn't go away. It's possible that it comes back. It's possible that other pandemics come up in the future, right? And so we have to know, or we have to have some kind of a plan for what we do when the next time a threat like this arises. And, and you know, I think we should have some conversations about that, to know if it's, do we revert exactly to one set of regulations? Do we have to go through this whole process again? I would be interested in, in making sure that we can have those conversations.
Good, thank you. Okay, you had a question?
And I just have one question regarding the masks. So you guys want to require it, and it's gone back and forth whether the masks are good, they're bad. I mean, experts have said one way or the other, and I'm no health person, so I, it's not my determination. But I have some employees who their doctors don't want them to wear masks because of their health issues. So who rules? You or their doctor?
Good question. I'm looking over at the legal table. Thoughts on that, or Dr. Heeb, do you have a thought, or? Call the medical team in now.
This has been brought up before, and there's really very few reasons that a person shouldn't wear a mask. And the general consensus is if you're well enough to be out in public or well enough to work, you should be able to, well enough to wear a mask. You know, there might be rare, specific cases, but I would say get a note from the doctor. You know, if you need an exception, and it's, and it's that important, get a note from the doctor. I would accept that.
Okay.
I would just note, Mayor, within our own organizations, if that were to occur, what we would try to do is make reasonable accommodations for that individual. Many times it depends on the business, whether or not you can locate that individual by themselves to operate or away from the public and others, keeping them distance away from as many people as possible. So there are measures and ways in which you can work through this process, and that's what's important. A couple of comments that I'd like to respond to that were made tonight. When it comes to testing, we are looking at opportunities there, but we do have to work with our healthcare providers, and we're constantly looking at what we can do to improve those measures here in this community, but know that there are obstacles in place, from the services to not only the, the products that are used for testing, but there's always new advancements coming out. As far as marketing, the city is marketing as much as we can. We could always do better. We've done a number of videos. We push out social media. We do talk to the press as much as possible, but unfortunately, everything gets lost. And that's where we need our community partners to help us to communicate these efforts. And I would ask Council to help us get that message out to our community partners. I've talked to the Chamber, to the Economic Development, to the CVP, and they're on board with helping us with those efforts. And so hopefully in the next week or so, you're going to see a, a stronger effort amongst all of us to push that information out. We've also talked about a promise similar to, I forget what gentleman came up here and talked about. Councilmember Wendell brought this to our attention, that some of the communities are doing this across the nation, and that is businesses that are willing to take the pledge that we as businesses are willing to do whatever we can to keep our customers healthy through those proactive measures noted through the CDC. So those efforts are underway as well. We can't do enough, we can't say enough, but it's important that we all do our part. And so from Council, I would ask that you continue to help us ask our partners to be vocal in moving those efforts, and from staff's perspective, I promise you will continue to make those things happen. When it comes to enforcement, really, we haven't had too much trouble, but the issue that we have is that people need to help us understand where our obstacles are out there in the community. There are people that are not following these requirements, to give us a call to let us know. We have a beautiful, wonderful app called Engage Brookings, and anyone can download this on their smartphone, Android, or Apple phone, and they could submit a request 24/7. Engage Brookings, encourage you to download that. You can give us a call, you can shoot us an email, and we will respond immediately to those businesses. One hiccup that we have had is bartenders. Because the ordinance doesn't clarify specifically bartenders, we haven't been able to enforce that as, as restrictively, but if this motion, or if this ordinance passes at the next meeting, that'll give us the teeth to be able to do so. So we can have further conversations and, and report more at the next meeting as well.
Back to your comment, Councilman Wendell, about having greater deep discussions, dives on this. Instead of tonight, we do it on the next council meeting, would be the 14th. That way we can have, staff can be prepared, and maybe we, people, council members especially could send staff your questions.
Actually, Mayor, if I can, we will have to have a special meeting July 7th because the current ordinance expires July 13th.
July 14th is our next council meeting.
Yes, but we'll need a, a special meeting July 7th.
Right, for this, but you're talking about two separate things.
Okay.
Yeah. I got to get you sitting next to me again so we know. So is, is that all right, Councilman Wendell, if we move it to the 14th and we can be better prepared to have that discussion?
And I think even if that information was ready on the 7th to share, it seems like if we're convening and we can do it a week earlier, let's, let's share that publicly, a conversation around enforcement and education.
Great, okay. All right, great discussion. Under Other Business, ask Assistant City Manager to introduce Resolution 20-60.
Resolution 20-60 accepts the gift of a centennial clock from the Rotary Club of Brookings. The Rotary Club has fundraised to provide for the purchase and installation of the clock. The clock will be located at the southeast corner of Main Avenue and Fifth Street, which is across from the post office. The City of Brookings is proposed to pay the annual insurance premium on the clock, which is approximately $15 per year. The Rotary Club and the City of Brookings will split evenly maintenance costs going forward, which will include an annual maintenance contract starting between years five and seven. The Public Art and Historic Preservation Commissions have been engaged and are supportive of this project. Representatives from the Rotary Club are present, and I would ask them to say a few words about the clock if they so choose. Staff does recommend approval and will stand for questions.
Good evening. I'm Don Norton. I'm the incoming president of the Brookings Rotary Club, incoming in about five hours, as a matter of fact. Mayor Corbett, members of the City Council, and staff members as well. In February of 1920, Brookings had a population of 3,921 people, and 21 of those people gathered together to start a Rotary Club sponsored by the Rotary Club in Watertown. And of course, the Brookings Club later on went on to return that favor by starting clubs in Madison and Canton. Over the years, the club has made a significant contribution to the vitality of our community. We mirrored the growth and improved the quality of life along with the city. This year, we're celebrating our 100th anniversary with 100 members. It's only natural that we celebrate by giving you a gift. Working over the past year, and it has been a year that we started with the Brookings Arts Council, the Parks Department, Historical Society, Brookings Municipal Utilities, and the city officials, we're pleased to present to the city a 10-foot clock to stand at that southeast corner of Fifth Street and Main Avenue. We're proud of our community and look forward to 100 more years of service above self. And so I respectfully ask that you accept our gift.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Norton? Great gift, and now people have been asking me for so long. When are we going to get a clock on Main, so?
Yeah.
Got to quit giving them your phone number, I guess, so, no.
Thank you.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion.
The move.
Second. Any public comment? Counsel comment? Please call roll.
Hilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank all the Rotary members, if you would, please. All right, next one, Community Development Director Mike Struck, about Resolution 20-56.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, members of the audience, Ordinance 20-056 is a resolution that would dissolve tax increment District Number 4. This was a district that was created in 2008 for some affordable housing projects where the infrastructure was able to use the property tax increment. That has, all the expenses have been satisfied, and the next step in the process is to dissolve the district, bill no fight by the state and the county, and any tax, property tax funds that the city has received to date will be returned to the appropriate taxing entities, and this will be off the books. I would stand for any questions.
Entertain a motion to approve.
The move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment, any questions for Mr. Struck? Counsel comments or questions? Councilman Niemeyer?
I just want to say that this is a perfect example of the city getting involved and doing a development for, for affordable housing. I'm not going to say it's low-income housing because they were 160,000 max, but this one and the one that we will be discussing next were perfect examples of how a city can help with housing.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Bacon?
I would just echo, echo that, that this, to me, is a celebration of good work on our part and the developers, and it's an asset to our community.
Okay.
Question, I'm sorry. Mike, tell me, how many years was, was this ago that we, it's not, obviously, it was set up for 20 years, but this is way before that.
Yeah, and so this one was created, I believe, in August of 2008, and it was technically paid off, I believe, by June of 2019. And so we just had to follow up with the process to dissolve it, make sure everything was completed on time, and now we're kind of wrapping that up. And so there will be a distribution back to some of the other taxing entities.
So it was almost done in half the time expected.
Correct, yep.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Hilton Byrne.
Aye.
Resolution 20-56 approved. Next one is you again.
Yes, Resolution 20-057 is a resolution to dissolve tax increment District Number 3, which is the Valley View addition in the southwest corner of, of Brookings. One thing that's a little bit interesting with this one is this was created in June of 2008, likewise was also paid off fully with all these expenses in, in 2019. However, the previous one had a, a project However, the previous one had a project cost of about 475,000, and so it was pretty reasonable to get that paid off in a quick amount of time. This particular district, District Number Three, was just over a million dollars. And so to be able to generate the increment from that residential subdivision in that same amount of time, and it had the same conditions as far as price points for the sale of the homes, part of it was because it is a little bit larger area, but also part of it was because of the demand and how quickly development occurred out in that area, that you're able to capture much, much more increment in a much shorter time. And so it was a very successful housing project there as well, so staff does recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any public comment on this? Counsel comment? Please call a roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Resolution 20-57 approved. And here's our city engineer.
Thank you. I'll introduce this item. This is a discussion and possible action to authorize an encroachment easement for 420 Main Avenue into the public right-of-way. Just for some history on this area, the City Engineers Department received a request to construct two doorways at 420 Main Avenue, and both of those doorways have been constructed so they swing out into the public right-of-way. So the request involves both a north door and a south door. The property owner did follow the, he obtained a building permit for the remodeling project that included the door reconstruction, and the site plan had shown an alcove on the north door, and although the south door did show it swung out into the right-of-way, our department wasn't sure of the distance that it would swing out into the right-of-way. And so the city reviewed the, there's some pictures here in your council packet, just so you could see the difference between the north door areas and the south door. And we did have a DRT meeting to discuss this application, and really concerned about the safety of doors swinging out into the right-of-way. Right now, in the downtown area, there's a two-foot gray area of sidewalk that is in the public right-of-way, but it's more of a transition piece of sidewalk. And then the eight-foot wide tan sidewalk is the accessible sidewalk for the public. And so both of these doors would swing out into that tan sidewalk. And so we provided some information in your packet, and the engineering staff is recommending that the encroachments be removed from the right-of-way, and along with the DRT recommendation. And I know the applicant is here tonight to speak to this item, and then Jared Thomas, and I can stand for any questions.
First, let's have a motion to approve the recommendation from city engineer and the DRT.
So moved.
So motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Okay, applicant's here, if you care to speak to it?
I'm Dustin Hendrickson, 1139 Indian Hills Road. So these projects are the hardest projects to build, because while you're building them, you run into stuff that is not built to construction norms now, so we're trying to figure out how to do stuff. So I'll address the south door first. So the south door, we built it exactly to plan, because on the plan, we have to remove that wood that's inside the, that opening, because that wood is not historical, and we're trying to do this to historical standards as well. And by the way, no one knew about this public right-of-way thing, not me, the developer that has done multiple storefronts downtown, not the inspector, either inspector that I asked, or the guy that installs all the glass downtown, didn't know this was a thing until my issue. So this is the first I've ever heard of it, and I've been involved with downtown a lot. So it's, the door got set, so the door is a couple inches wider, because that wood was moved, and then that door is set all the way to the back, but it's on the wood piece. So when the installers, we use the professionals at Midwest Glass, and they were the ones that did it, they have to go to the middle of that stone, because that stone is rounded. So when that stone's rounded, you can't push that, it's very hard anyways to push that frame all the way to the back, and it makes more sense to put it in the center. So that, and it was drawn exactly like that on the plan. So yes, the door swings out a little bit more, but in my opinion, that should have got caught. This also meets fire code. If we swing in, we've had a swing-in door once before, the wind blows them in all the time, so you have to lock them. This needs to be unlocked. It doesn't meet fire code as easily if, for some reason, you need to partition these off, because everything has a swing out onto the sidewalk. And there's also 18 other doors that swing into the public right-of-way on Main in the three-block section alone. That doesn't count any of the side streets downtown. And I know there was two more on one side street, I checked, so there's many, many doors that swing into the public right-of-way, unless there's no public right-of-way on the side streets. But there's at least 18 of these doors that swing into the public right-of-way, and this would be, the one would be, the one now swings in, it swings 33 inches into the public right-of-way right now, which is two foot, or two foot nine, I believe. The old door swung one foot 11 inches into the right-of-way, which is 33 inch, or it's 23 inches. So they, what I was told was that if you add 65%, you have 65% into the public right-of-way, which that meets, we're not, we're not moving 65% more into the public right-of-way, because that'd be 38 inches, and this, this one sticks 33 inches into the public right-of-way. So that's, that's the, that was going on in that door. The other double door, I do understand if I do have to fix that, but this is why it was done, the way it was done. Midwest Glass came out, and I showed him everything that's going on, and he had done a door two months prior to this door, on the VFW, one block exactly to the west, and they did the exact same thing. So he said, you know what, that alcove, it's not going to work out, and he just, he did it like this. And now, there's also reasons why he did it like this, because this also meets fire code, this meets ADA. If we move, put the alcove back in like it was, this building does not meet ADA, which is a federal regulation, which I don't know supersedes what. And then this has also been passed by the Historic Preservation, the SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation, we've passed both of these, and the Brookings County Historic Preservation also passed these, because of the ADA thing. So we meet, and so we meet three of the things, and then we don't meet the public right-of-way. And these buildings are just, there's not like, I don't know, that glass is huge, so we didn't even plan on having that glass, and we found this big expansive space of glass, and we're like, sweet, we want to do this glass ship, I said, yeah. So we moved forward with that. And that created the problem with the alcove, the alcove was hanging on some of this old stuff, it wasn't built very well, it was all wood. So the, just, they ripped it all down when Midwest Glass was here, and that's what they put. They do have a way to build an alcove, but it doesn't add anything besides moving the doors back, which would mean, then, if you approved these two doors, there'd be 20 doors swinging out instead of just 18. So, and also, many, many doors swing out onto Main, so it doesn't feel different, it doesn't feel unsafe, it doesn't feel bad. We had that door propped up and almost the entire time for construction, it was nice, and not one complaint did we get about having that door left open, because that building is so old, and we needed to get fresh air in there and stuff. So that's, that's the reasoning behind it. I didn't, there was no reasoning to do this, it just happened while we were doing the project, because it's just very difficult to stick to the plant, to 100% of the plan on these types of deals. And we spent way more money, too, than we anticipated, because we ran into some other issues, but that's a different topic.
Anyone else here to speak to this? Counsel, comments or questions? Yeah, Councilman Wendell?
I have a question for the city engineer, just a point of clarification. I want to make sure I understand the memo correctly. So the information that was submitted and approved, we understood that the doors would swing into the right-of-way, we just didn't know they would swing this far into the right-of-way? Is that, we knew that they would swing 21 inches into the right-of-way, is that, is that correct?
The exhibit on the left is what is on the building plans, and so there wasn't any dimensions showing, you can see the door swung outwards, just by the arc shape of the door, although we didn't have any information showing how many inches that would be. The previous door in the upper-right picture is open in that particular aerial photo, and it did show what the previous door looked like when it was swung outwards, it just happened to be the same picture of the doorway open on the aerial. So, but the new door does protrude about 13 inches further out into the right-of-way than the previous door did.
Okay.
This is Councilmember Brink, I have a question as well.
Okay.
For city engineer. I just wondered if you could explain for us the differences between the other doors on Main Avenue that might encroach into the public right-of-way, and what is happening with Mr. Hendrickson's building?
Yep, that's a great question. We've had, had a lot of dialogue about that in our office. We have had some doors, I believe, have gotten replaced without building permits, as we've started talking about this type of issue. Whenever we do see a building permit, in fact, we had a conversation with another property owner after this meeting, who wanted to do the same, take the alcove out, and then make their wall flush where it swung into the right-of-way. And so we were discouraging that, we prefer to have the alcoves, just so those doors don't swing into the right-of-way. And, you know, I'd have to look on a case-by-case basis on the ones that, that swing into the right-of-way, whether they pre-existed the ordinance, or if they just constructed it without a building permit. There's probably some of both types of cases.
Councilmember Bacon, did you have a question?
Well, and I think Leah maybe helped answer that. I wanted to understand if, if this met historical preservation criteria, how that conflicts with your concerns.
I guess I personally wasn't involved in those historical preservation meetings, but they did approve the design, unless Dustin wants to touch on that, but they did get approval.
Yeah, it was all-
This is Holly.
Sorry, I was just answering Patty's. Everything was approved, but we did the few renditions along the way, because there were some changes that happened, but we were always involved with the State Historic Preservation Office first and foremost on everything, because they're the ones, they take the lead on this kind of stuff. So very involved with them, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Tilton Byrne?
Yeah, I just had a question about, with the doors swinging into the right-of-way, the way that they are set up, does that encroach at all upon any kinds of restrictions for individuals with disabilities, or the ability to, say, have a wheelchair go down the side block?
This is Jared, Building Service Administrator. I think your question is, the way the door swing, is the, the way that they're installed or the way they were previous, does that affect the ADA, is that, is that the question?
Yeah, with this additional swing, the additional inches into the right-of-way, does that encroach on any of that?
The swing into the right-of-way wouldn't really impact ADA, as long as it had an accessible approach to the doorway, whether that was in the right-of-way, or whether that was on the, the public property, so I don't, I don't think that would make the impact, the encroachment on the right-of-way.
Any other questions, counsel, or comments?
I was just going to add, one of the concerns, excuse me, from the city, was that if, if somebody were walking along the tan sidewalk, which is the, oh, sorry, if somebody were walking along the tan sidewalk downtown, that's the 2% cross-slope that meets the, the ADA regard, or guidelines, that somebody could, you know, bump into a doorway that had opened into that tan sidewalk. So, so anyway, that was just the, the safety concern that we had.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Keith. Oh. So Mr. Hendrickson made a comment about if the double doors were put in, that it wouldn't meet ADA.
Correct.
Explain that.
Brad said that if he would install the doors where they were, that ramp is too steep, so when you go up, it's too steep to pull open the door and then go in. So now the doors are on the flat sidewalk, you can open them and then go up the ramp. There's a lot of rules with ADA.
I guess I don't recall the ramp being in that doorway.
Yeah, there's a ramp in the doorway, in the alcove, there's a ramp.
Okay, and, and does the ramp still exist inside the door, then?
Yep.
So would that cause problems for-
No, because it's on the other side of the door. So by, because it's what side of the door that thing's on, your, your platform, your flat-
But they're on their way down, coming out the door, then?
Yeah.
And that's not a problem?
No, it's different.
Okay.
Because of the way the door swings.
Just asking the-
Councilmember Bacon?
There's a lot of rules, ADA.
No, I, mine is more a comment where I'm struggling, because this makes sense to me, what, you know, not having the doors swing out. However, if we have all of these other businesses, 17, or whatever it was you said, that already do, and we're allowing those, if we make Dustin do the N-word, then do we need to go and make every other business now comply with policy? I'm just struggling with that myself.
I, I think it would depend on a case-by-case situation, council member, whether or not they had that door installed before the ordinance, or if they installed it without a building permit, and that's something that we'll have to investigate, determine, and then place that factor. One of the questions I might have for staff is, there's some discussion about ADA, are there ways within code to have it swing inward and still meet ADA requirements?
Yes, there, there are some design options to have the doors installed the way that they currently are and meet the ADA. Typically, what we would see in that is a power-assist door opener with a push button, so that someone could push the button, the doors would swing, and they could egress in the building.
Outswinging doors are much safer in commercial environments, because you can get out to the street if there's actually something going on, so. And those mechanical, those things break all the time, especially with our wind, those doors would be ripped off. I've had experience with doors blowing in, with the one time I did the in-swing door. The one thing, too, I wanted to say is that, as a business, we did go through all the requirements of ensuring and taking responsibility for these doors. So the other businesses more than likely hadn't done that, and we've done the civil engineering and the, whatever was required for the city, and the insurance, putting them on as a rider, too. So we've met all those requirements that most of those other businesses probably haven't, because they're not even aware that their door swings into the public right-of-way.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Brink? Corbett?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yeah.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to that point. Councilmembers, do you have any topics for future discussion? Remember, now we'll have another council meeting on the 7th of July. Councilmember Bacon?
I apologize that I don't have more information to bring to you on this, but I've just spent some time in Colorado with my daughter, and when we got back, and I was sharing with her the decisions we'd be making tonight on restrictions on business due to COVID. And she shared with me that the City of Littleton, Colorado, has implemented a policy from, I think it's 4:00 PM on Friday till noon on Sunday, where they're blocking off their main street and allowing the bars to be able to bring tables outside, so that they could increase their capacity a little bit, and the weather's nice, and might be helpful. So I would like to just get that information, share it with you, and maybe we will put it on agenda for future discussion.
Any other topics for future discussion? Okay. We'll be going into executive session for the media, there'll be no action taken when we come out of executive session. So pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, for preparing for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee rep, entertain a motion, go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Executive session. Out of executive session at 7:53, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night. Good night.